Four o'clock, the meeting is now called to order. This is a City of Sims City Council Special Session called from November sixteenth, twenty seventeen. Meeting is called to order at four o'clock. We'll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Yep. Very good. Invitational Pledge of Allegiance. Chief, would you mind doing the Pledge of Allegiance? And let's see, uh, let me see here. Who could I get? Who wants to do the invocation? If I am picky.
Shannon.
No, Mr. Webb. Is that okay with you?
I can do it.
I mean, excuse me.
You know, Thanksgiving, one Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Uh, my son, um, got shortest prayer. They asked him to do Thanksgiving, which coming up on. He said, uh, 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 thank you for, thank you for Paul and God bless all.
I like that. Okay. All right. Indication. I mean, uh, yeah, indication first. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this time that we can come together, Lord, and conduct the bids that you would have us to conduct. And God, we thank you for this privilege and opportunity that we have in this part of the world to serve your people. And God, we ask you to bless every thought, every action that we take here this day and from this day forward. Lord, forgive us where we fail, for it's from Christ I'm going to pray. Amen.
Amen.
You want me to say as a pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all. Okay. Uh, first item off is item number five, consideration of minutes in the regular council session. You have copies of those. Take a minute to look at them. They're not incredibly long. Any questions on the call, the minutes?
Mike, motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I agree, opposed. The, the minutes from the, uh, what was that date? November seventh. November seventh meeting, uh, are approved. Were those all the minutes? Shannon, that's it. Okay, moving on to number six. Uh, we have two items, uh, two items for consideration tonight, two resolutions. Is there a motion for immediate consideration?
So move, second.
Uh, roll call vote. Shannon.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Webb.
Here.
Councilman Watts.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Platt.
Here.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So we have these, uh, two items are approved for immediate consideration. All right. You understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. We have two items that has been approved for immediate consideration tonight, two resolutions. The first one is the appointment of the city clerk. You will see here in front of you, uh, Resolution twenty seventeen, electing city clerk. Be resolved by the city council of the City of Sims, Alabama, while in special session on the sixteenth day of November twenty seventeen, that pursuant to Code of Alabama, section eleven dash forty-three dash four. Deborah A. Handberry, uh, MMC, that means Master Certified Clerk, is hereby elected as city clerk, effective immediately with a salary fixed at forty-five thousand dollars a year for a term of office to run concurrently with the terms of the current city mayor and city council, or until her successor is elected and qualified, whichever comes first. If approved, adapted, and approved this, uh, sixteenth day of November, uh, twenty seventeen. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
Who is Deborah?
Then we'll give you the phone.
Move, uh, move to, uh, approve.
Second.
Oh, okay. Move to approve. Uh, you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay, no, yeah. Here, let me, let me give you the, the signature. That'll tell you what you need to know. Take a look at that. Do you have any questions?
You need a cap?
Yeah. Any questions?
Alive, but I'm not right now.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments or considerations? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Watts. Councilman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes.
Councilman Platt.
Yes.
Very good. Motion is approved. Very good. Moving on. Um, next item is appointment of the nuisance abatement officer as enforcement officer for nuisance ordinance. This is a resolution that deals with, uh, upcoming work for the city as we prepare, um, to, uh, institute our court system. Mr. Gail Young is, uh, up for discussion. He would be in charge of our nuisance abatement issue, and he would issue citations in conjunction with the sheriff's department. All right. Are there any questions on that?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
What about his, uh, payday? How, how is that, uh, what?
Uh, let's see. They remain unchanged. His, in other words, his, his employee's status and payment rate shall remain unchanged. So there's no additional funds there.
But he, um, still would be probably a part-time job?
Probably so. Yeah. Because we don't anticipate a huge number of, of ordinances, ordinance violations being written, or nuisance abatement. You know, as we talked about before.
Tell me, tell me about abatement.
Well, it just means control. Nuisance control. Abate means to, you know.
Stop.
Stop, yeah.
Mr. President, I move we approve.
Second.
A roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Watts.
Yes.
Councilman Platt.
Yes.
Councilman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes.
Very good. The item is approved. Item's being approved. But that's important, actually, the approval of checks for signature. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the checks? Mr. Webb? Mr. Platt?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
I have not, but Mr. Webb would you pass?
Yeah, but Mr. Smith, look at him.
Can I have a list of them in your hand there?
Uh, okay.
You want this?
Yeah, I think he wanted the checks.
He wants the checks instead?
Thank you very much.
Shall I let the finance chair look at it?
It is kind of odd, isn't it?
Yeah. Good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve for checks? So move. Okay, roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Platt.
Yes.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes. Very good. The checks are approved for signature. Uh, items number eight and nine, um, I have a consultation with the city attorney. Uh, it's a bit premature to discuss these two issues, so we're not going to go into this tonight. I would just say to the council, if you want to do some research on your own regarding, uh, bids for gasoline storage tanks and, uh, gasoline storage tanks in general, uh, do that on your own, and we'll put it on the agenda, uh, in the future. Okay? But right now, we're not going to discuss that. Are there any other, uh, comments or announcements? Well, I have one. Tonight is, uh, the municipal dinner at Satsuma for the council members and their spouses going to that. It's at Satsuma Still Creek Lodge at seven PM. Uh, and of course, council is always invited, as are their spouses. And so, uh, how many of you think you might be going to that? Mr. Platt, three? Okay, good, good. All right. We'll probably have to do a turnout. You know where Still Creek Lodge is?
Well, yeah, but.
I'll get you a map.
I see everybody with their mates and it's, it's just right now.
Okay.
Of the rough.
I understand.
Fish, you know, that and stuff, but I'm great grateful.
Okay. All right, um, yeah, let's see. And then we have the upcoming Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Wednesday, December, which is Friday at six-thirty in front of the library. And then we have the Christmas parade the following, uh, Saturday. Okay? And, um, and then our next meeting, of course, will be next Tuesday. Are there any other comments or announcements?
I wanted to ask about next Tuesday. There's a lot of people that's going to be going out of town.
Yes.
And, you know, if, if this meeting can, I don't know if we've got a lot to discuss in that meeting. So if this one could be maybe the end of month meeting and then go on to, I don't know. It might be have to do with a bunch of stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, I've been asked that before. Here's a way we'll do it. Um, Tuesday at, at five to three, I'll be sitting here. All right? And if we have a quorum, as, as required by state law, then we'll have a meeting. If there is no quorum, if the council, majority of the council's traveling or on the road or otherwise vacant, then of course, there will be no meeting. I'll return here five minutes before, same thing. If there's not a quorum of council present at four PM on Tuesday, then there will be no meeting, and I will announce at that time, "Thank you very much for attending. Sorry there's no meeting tonight. We'll see you two weeks. Have a great Thanksgiving. Eat lots of turkey."
Yeah.
Okay? There you go.
I got you.
All right. So, that's pretty much it. Yes, sir? Oh, very important. On Tuesday, uh, from four PM until about six-thirty, Fox Ten is doing a remote weather program from the City of Sims Public Training Facility. And we are just delighted. And basically what it is, is they have sought out communities that, uh, would be interested in hosting Fox Ten. And it's a great opportunity for the council to be introduced. I would ask all the council to be there about ten to six on Tuesday.
Which is?
Next Tuesday, sir. Next Tuesday. Yeah. If you can make it. If you can make it. At the public safety, at the fire training center. And basically what will happen about five minutes till six or six o'clock, Channel Ten will introduce the city council for the City of Sims, maybe ask us a couple of questions, uh, get it, get some pictures, and then they'll start the broadcast. Between four and six, they're going to be set up, and Chief Brooks has agreed to set up some fire, uh, exercises, some rappelling, uh, I don't know, whatever he's going to do. I'm not going to try to tell him how to do that, but I know you'll have some good things. Channel Ten said they really appreciate that because they're going to have some dead time there, and if they can have pictures of firemen doing all the wonderful things they do, that'd be great. Okay? So that will be Tuesday. And so if the council, those who are in town, can be there about ten to six over at the Fire Training Center, we'd sure appreciate it. Arthur, if you'll show up and get some pictures.
Well, probably won't go until next, uh, next edition.
Okay. Oh, I don't care. I mean, whatever you put it in's fine. But it's a great opportunity to showcase the community and a great opportunity to talk about what we have going on here in, uh, in Sims. And, uh, I'm really happy about that. Channel Ten, great people. Uh, there in public comments?
I don't know if this is really something that I should mention, but a prayer for a friend of mine that's just found out he's stage four.
That's certainly.
Cancer. And just, I mean, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I feel like y'all all are, you know, close.
Certainly.
And family.
Certainly.
And if y'all would remember.
What's his name?
His name, Randy, just Randy.
Randy. Please remember Randy, stage four, cancer?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, that's serious business.
It's a mess, yeah.
All right. All right, your public comments? No one gave you a phone? No public comments? Okay. Any other comments or announcements from council? Council members? Move we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the council.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Gentlemen, I'll try to be brief. I was going to load up the agenda until it was brought to my attention that it was a special, uh, meeting, and we could only address what was the, uh, reason for the, the meeting. What I would like to do is point out a few things of concern. I don't believe that I'm the only council member that has these concerns. The first, uh, paper that you got there, and if you're, I think I made one for council or the counselor. There should be an extra.
How many are we, uh, separately? How many are we? Just one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't want to miss it.
Yeah.
I have one here regarding bonuses. Is that the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Everybody should have a piece of paper that says bonuses at the top.
Yeah. Uh, what you're looking at is, um, a way that we can show some recognition for our city employees. Benjamin Franklin said, "Well done" is, uh, much better than, than well said. We take every opportunity that we can to tell our employees how, uh, much we appreciate them and so on and so forth. And we buy shiny red fire trucks, and we buy bulldozers, and we are in pretty much, uh, constant communication to the supervisors of our department. But we very seldom get the opportunity to really, uh, do one-on-one, face-to-face with the rest of employees.
Go ahead.
And, uh, so I was doing a little research. It's Christmas time. Everybody's talking about, uh, love, family, friendship, goodwill towards men, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, what I would like for the council to consider is, uh, actually the last paragraph of that. You'll see, uh, from that paperwork that there was an Attorney General opinion passed down in nineteen eighty-one that says that you can legally, uh, give, uh, a immediate, uh, what, what is it?
Lump sum.
Lump sum pay increase, uh, to employees, uh, for one time a year. I called the league, uh, attorney and talked with them. They said is, uh, that this is still good, that, uh, of course, I won't, you know, our, our council will look at this. But, uh, I would like to see the council approve, uh, we can't use, uh, we can't, it's not a bonus, it's not a raise. It's a one lump sum that'd be for the month of December. And after looking at the numbers, I think that, uh, if we could give each employee three hundred dollars to buy turkeys and toys, that'd go a long ways, uh, for showing how we really feel about them. We're losing about sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And I'd like to submit this in the form of a, uh, proposal or something as soon as possible.
Okay.
Not this meeting.
Yes, sir.
But I wanted y'all to have a heads up. I think it's something that we should do. Okay?
Yes, sir. Is there consideration for a resolution for the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Counsel will check in on that.
Yes, sir, if you would, uh, counsel, would you please see what you might find on that?
It's like you did at home.
Well, I'll try.
Mr. President, could I ask for a recess of one minute?
Yes. Uh, we're going to have a recess of one minute. You can't, you, you want everybody to have a copy of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I have six. Okay.
We got a motion to adjourn pending. That's going to have to be voted down. Then you're going to have to, uh, move to add this new item to the agenda. And for immediate consideration. Vote that up and then talk about it and vote on it.
I think the, the motion to adjourn takes precedent over anything. So y'all need to vote that down.
Well, and, uh, count, press it over. Is here?
He got different.
It's related.
Okay.
It's something that's supposed to be on the agenda, but we.
Oh, okay.
It's right down your alley, and it's very important.
Okay.
And I would like those to vote on that motion to adjourn and vote it down because.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. First, we're still in the, uh, comments from Mr. Platt, so there's no reason to stop before we finish that.
Well, technically, the motion to adjourn can be brought at any time and takes precedent over anything. Now, hadn't been seconded.
Okay.
So.
I seconded.
Okay, well, don't vote on that.
Now we have to vote on it.
Okay.
It's a, you know, I'm sorry. I have to tell the truth.
Mr., uh, uh.
But I didn't know this.
Okay, is there a motion to withdraw the, uh?
Some of it.
Go ahead.
To, uh, for the adjournment? Okay. All in favor? Uh, motion to adjourn is withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, if a, uh, adjournment is needed, can, uh, we just immediately reassemble? I mean, I don't want.
We just need to finish the business. We just need to keep on going until we finish, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But the meeting is not adjourned. The, the motion to adjourn the meeting is withdrawn, and you can continue to, to do your presentation, and we'll deal with it.
Well, like I said, I'm trying to be brief. I'll load.
That's okay.
Load the, uh, load you up.
It's government. We're not always brief.
Yeah. Next council meeting. Uh, gentlemen, um.
And this is laws of a clean city?
Yes, the laws of a clean city.
Okay.
And I think that we are steadily moving in the right direction. There has been so much work and, I mean, just so much aggravation trying to get to where we all want to be. And we still have issues with cleanliness, appearance, so on and so forth.
Right.
I think it's something that we should take, uh, seriously and take a, a look at this, uh, the first of the year. The information that I have given you here is just for, uh, you sitting around, uh, the Christmas fireplace and, and read through this because we really need to, uh, to clean the city up.
Okay. You want us to read this and?
Yes, sir. I'm just saying that's for your reading pleasure during the holidays and after the first of the year. We need to get serious about it.
Okay. Would you like it placed on the agenda for discussion in January?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clerk, if you would do that, I would ask the council to read the packet of information provided by, by Councilman Platt, and we will put it on the January agenda, sir?
Yes, sir.
And discuss it in detail. Very good? Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like a request. We, uh, add something to the agenda that accidentally, uh, didn't get on here that really needs to be. It's very, very important to the entire city.
Okay, will be the correct procedure, counsel?
Describe what it is and ask that I would like to move to add this to the agenda for immediate consideration.
All right, this is authorization for merit pay raises for the City of Sims, uh, city employees starting today.
Okay.
And so I would like to, and DJ is printing out copies of that as we speak. We'll bring it over here in a moment.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd like to amend the, and we also have a call for immediate, uh, uh, action on this.
Very good.
What is that?
Pay raises for the city employees.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to explain it. There were a, uh, not everyone, because we didn't give a blanket raise this year. There were certain individuals of our employees who were considered by their department heads to have excelled in their, in their work, in their particular areas. Uh, for example, um, for example, just using an example, firefighter driver one who had consistently performed above his or her level of, uh, tasking, above what is expected of him or her at that position. And so the fire chief and public, uh, public works and city hall staff gave me some recommendations for some modest increases for those individuals. And that's basically what we're talking about here today.
Right.
Uh, they're modest, they're modest increases, but we felt they were deserved, as I said, this year. Last year, we gave a five percent raise to everybody. This year, we are, um, scrutinizing that much more carefully, and we appreciate the work and effort of all our city employees. But I think it's safe to say, based on the input I received, some of them have excelled, and some of them have gone above and beyond the call of duty. And what Mr. Smith is referring to is a list of those individuals for, uh, as I would, I would term it, to be modest, pay increases. Correct?
Right.
Okay. So, uh, that's basically what we're talking about.
And I apologize for not making sure that they're on the agenda, but I would again ask for immediate consideration of this.
We don't have it yet, though.
Well, it's, I can read, but I can read it, which is the old tradition here. We can read it out. It's very short, if I, if I could. Go do that.
Is that all right? Go ahead. We're going to read the resolution, um, but I think first we need to, to vote for immediate consideration.
We need to vote to add this item to the agenda, and it's got to be unanimous.
Some of it.
Don't move.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Watts.
Yeah.
Councilman Platt.
Yes.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, very good. The motion is approved. This item is added to the agenda and, um, so we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Immediate consideration. So move, move.
Yeah, move for immediate consideration. Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Watts.
Yeah.
Councilman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Platt.
Yes.
Councilman Lawson.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, the resolution is about to be read by Mr. Smith, has been approved for addition to the agenda and for immediate consideration. So go.
Merit pay raises for the City of Sims city employees. Whereas many City of Sims employees have increased their capabilities through training and experience, and whereas many City of Sims employees have been tasked with greater responsibilities over the past year, whereas the fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen city budget previously approved includes provisions for these raises, now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council to hereby authorize merit increase and pay in accordance with the recommendations of their supervisors, effective on the sixteenth day of November twenty seventeen. Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Second.
What is, time, am I coming up like your percentage? I mean, is there a percentage there?
No, it's not a percentage. It's based on an evaluation of each employee and what they were making in their job description and what the change would be in the new job description. Some were moved up, as I write, some were moved up into a different position, some were given just a dollar or two increase.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Because for example, if you have a, if you have a firefighter one, driver, and he's been, I mean, Chief, we've talked about this before. You had one, he was a firefighter one, he's been doing the work of two, correct? And so what we're doing is we're acknowledging that, the gentleman has done the training, he's worked above and beyond, he's been doing the work of a firefighter two. And now we're basically officially acknowledging that and adjusting his pay and salary schedule and job description to meet that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we have. All right, very good. Good question.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second, roll call vote.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Watts?
Yes.
Councilman Webb?
Yes.
Councilman Platt?
Yes.
Councilman Lawson?
Yes.
Very good. That's approved. I'm glad you got that in, thank you. At the 11th hour, which you made. Okay, are there any other comments or announcements?
We'll be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, wait. Not true.
I thought you were true.
I'm sorry.
Go, keep going then.
Okay. All right, this one here, I've explained that if you would, please read it so that we can address it after the holidays. It ties right in with the ordinances that have been established in enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. This here may be something that you have a little concern with. It's just, Chris, I'll give you one. This is just an example of what I deal with a lot. And it ties in with what I would like to title as a self-examination by the council so that we can try to evaluate how good a job we are doing before others have to come tell us that we're doing a good job or a bad job. As chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I, I think that we are, as a ruling body, trying to accomplish too much with too little. And I think that the agenda itself is evidence of that. And this was sent to the council members, cell phones and telephones and power lines heated up. Everybody wanted to know what this is and what that is. And gentlemen, it's my opinion that that is a very good example of a lack of communication.
And you're talking about, the paper you give us is, are agencies prepared for a national power grid down?
Well, it's just an example. There are many contingencies that we as a city need to evaluate and take a look at in order to protect our citizens.
I think you make a valid point. I think, you know, we're all aware of the fact that our, our national power grid structure is very old. And it's fraught with problems. So I think you bring up a very good point. I do. And I think it's something we need to address, yeah.
The point that I really would like to bring to the light is, again, I think we're trying to do too much with too little. This, like I said, this agenda.
Sure.
Tells me that when it was put together, people were pressed for time, did not have the time or the means to communicate this as soon as they could or explain it. Just an example, just an example. And the failure of a complete agenda, that's another example. What I'm saying is, we may be pinching the penny too hard. We really need to take an evaluation of what we need and what we don't need.
Yeah, you're talking in terms of personnel.
Yes, sir. And the bad side of this is, we try to recognize and reward people for very good work. We also need to see that we're not spending money on people that are not.
That's a very good point. I know it's, it's the other side of employee management. And, you know, you always want to give special attention to those who need pay raises and they need recognition. But as you used to say in the army, sometimes it goes the other way. And you need to, as they used to say, adjust their pay. So if you had people who are getting X number of dollars and they're not earning that, then we as a council have a duty to make sure their pay is adjusted.
Exactly. Well, as a council, it's our responsibility. And when the holidays are here, the only thing that I'm asking to move as quickly as possible on is to reach an agreement on the lump sum payment.
Sure.
For the employees. And then on the first of the year, we get busy looking at these issues. I think that we have employees in positions where we don't need employees. And I think that we're desperately short in others. I'm not just talking fire, I'm talking.
Well, I think, I think you make a valid point and I think we need to do just that.
Well, we consistently find ourselves chasing the same problem and somebody needs to.
Sure. I agree, you make a good point.
Thank you, sir.
Good sense. Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. This is a very good paper, too.
Yeah.
That's some good stuff.
Okay, are there any other items for announcement? Any other businesses might come before the meeting? Is there a motion?
Would we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
What would we do if nobody voted on that adjourn? Would you sit here?
We would just sit here forever.
You ought to try that.
I won't. I imagine, I imagine everybody would leave except the six of us.
I'm always jumping around.
Well, I guarantee it's actually illegal.
Don't forget Satsumas. Arthur, what's up?
Oh, no, I just want to talk to the council.
Okay. Hey, Charles?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to share with you one thing before you go. About that guy with the four. I'll give him right back to you. I want to talk to you about these guys.
All right, if you want a ride to dinner.
Have a good night.
I'll show up at my place.